Okay, we're back in open meeting, September 24th, after our executive session. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. And the first -- phone's off. First issue we have on the meeting is the Plymouth Gas and Convenience liquor license.
It looks like this is all set to go. Bree had prepared it, and I believe it's set for the hours that you would discuss.
Eight to eleven, or eight, eight in the morning to eleven thirty PM on any day preceding a legal holiday, except when prohibited by Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 33. Sunday hours to be ten to eleven, unless prohibited by Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 33. So I make a motion that we approve this as printed?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think they're even open that late.
No. It used to be it could only be from twelve o'clock on Sundays, but they changed that.
But they changed it, yeah.
Yeah. The next one is the Moon and Back Cafe Common Liquor License. Do we have that one, or is that on?
We said that we're still waiting on some necessary paperwork so we could schedule this for your next agenda on October 1st.
Okay. Special town meeting follow-up. Mr. Russo?
Well, we had great fun.
We did.
Really successful meeting. Apparently, we've just heard 193 voters, which for a special town meeting is pretty amazing.
As former moderator, it's pretty amazing, even for an annual town meeting. We, I usually think of 120 as the norm. This is amazing.
It is amazing.
If I were gonna do, I'll do my rave now, I'll get it out of the way. That sense of shared purpose, sense of community was really a beautiful thing, and kind of in sharp contrast to other issues we've occasionally had at town meeting, and I mean, it was straight-out sweet. Seeing that sea of hands was quite nice. So, that's a good first step. We've gone right back to work. Linda Letty and I will be meeting with Town Council a little later this week to deal with further title evaluation things, and the start of the bond, the funding through a bond is happening through the treasurer's office, and so we'll just go right back to work.
Great.
Much to do, presumably the closing November 4th or 5th, and, you know, whereas that seems like another step, then we immediately go into the sale of lots, so plenty more to do, but just a really, really nice hurdle to get over. And I think, in general, just totally thankful for the town being so involved.
And people can continue to financially support through donations?
Donations, absolutely. The stuff's on the website on how to do that. We are continuing to talk to some potentially big funders, or hope they can be big funders, and we are taking a look at grants that aren't so time-sensitive. So there's, I think we're up to about $95,000 pledged, which in and of itself is just stunningly amazing for this amount of time. But that process absolutely continues, and we'd love to keep that moving along.
Congratulations. Great job.
Yeah, absolutely. You worked hard for that.
Thank you. The support of my fellow selectmen was a really important part of this, and we're all quite appreciative.
Okay. Award bids? The mini pumper? What's going on there, Liz?
So, it didn't turn out quite how we had hoped. We had received one bid, but unfortunately, after conferring with the inspector general's office, we had to deem it non-responsive. It came in just under what we had printed in the advertisement as the minimum bid. So because it was printed in the ad, you can't then award to somebody, because it could have precluded other people from bidding. So I put it back out again.
Okay.
And we start the process over again. This time, after talking with the folks at the IG's office, and given the fact that, as a matter of law anyway, we have language in there that says we reserve the right to reject any and all bids, we took the minimum out.
Okay.
And that was a decision that we came to Chief Benjamino and I, after going over kind of the piece of equipment again, and the fact that it's not really serving any useful purpose. So it's back out now. What I would ask, where it's on the agenda, if you could take a vote allowing me, or authorizing me, to award it, if we do get at the, upon bid opening, and the highest responsive and responsible bidder, because what I find with the pieces of equipment like this, they only give you like a 24-hour turnaround time if you're going to award it to them, and we wouldn't conceivably be able to post a meeting and everything. So if you could authorize me to award to the highest responsive and responsible bidder upon the bid opening date, should we have one? Obviously, if it's another situation, then we won't be awarding it, but...
So I would make a motion that we, say it again so we get it right?
That you authorize the town administrator to award on behalf of the Board of Selectmen for the GMC Mini Pumper to the highest responsible and responsive bidder, should we receive such upon bid opening.
Okay.
What's the date, Liz? Oh, I'll second the motion first.
The date is October 11th.
Okay, so it's pretty quick.
It's coming up fast, and what I, what I did with the last one, it's a public bid opening, and I had Chief Benjamino open the one bid with me, just so that we could both attest to what had come in and what was open, and we both just signed off on that. And I notified, in this case, I notified the person that unfortunately, the bid was non-responsive.
Okay.
So it's a brand-new process.
Alright, so we had a motion and a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have we received any bids back on the new bid?
Not yet, but it just went, it just went out at the end of last week.
The Old Town House?
So, for the, let's do Project 18 OTH1, which is known as the windows project for the Old Town House. We received several responses, which I had shared, shared with everybody before, and this has been available to the public, as people who have put responses in have been requesting it. The lowest responsible and responsive response that we received, these were not sealed bids, was from MJ Connors Company, Inc., out of Hanson, Mass. And the total project cost for them is $46,964. John Willamson and I went through, and we did check their references. So if the board is comfortable with that, I believe it's a CPC project, so Mark may wanna say a few words about it, but assuming everybody's on board with that, I would recommend a motion to award the project to MJ Connors Company, Inc., for that amount, upon, contingent upon receipt of a 50% payment bond, which is required by Mass General Law. So once we have the bond in hand, then it can be the official notice.
Okay. Mike, do you have any?
Really nothing to say from the CPC perspective. This is a board of selectmen project, and traditionally, the way it works is the applicant reports back to CPC along the way, and I, I will report back to the committee along the way. I'm thrilled to vote to approve this.
Was there any, did they have any requirements, you know, of when it could start or not start, anything that would interfere?
Just in informal discussion with this company owner, she had let me know that there's about a four-to-five week lead time on the specific windows that are, that we're looking at installing.
Okay. And you worked that with John?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm keeping him involved in the process. He knows the building.
Yeah.
Inside and out, so...
I've got some comments after, but they're separate from this. That actually probably works out well, because John's been saying right along, we should do the painting first.
Okay.
And then the windows after, and then we'll just touch up around the windows. So I would make a motion as outlined by Liz, the town administrator? Is that all right?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Russo? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm trying to take the minutes at the same time.
I know. Bummer.
So then the next one was Project 18 OTH2, which is the restoration painting for the Old Town House. Again, responses were solicited, not a sealed bid process. And for this one, the lowest responsible and responsive quote that we got back was from DeMello Construction Services Corp. out of Whitman, Mass., and that amount is for $19,435. Same as for the other project, John Willamson and I went through all the paperwork, and then I contacted the references for them, and everything came back fine. So if the board is so inclined, I would recommend a motion to award that particular contract to DeMello Construction Services Corp. And there's no payment bond with that one.
Okay.
Because it's under 25.
So I was making a motion as outlined by the town administrator?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is good, because we had 87.5, if I remember correctly, as our...
Yep.
This is 66.4, so...
Which puts us right in the line of having a 20% reserve, which is...
Yeah, where we want to be.
Where we want to be, and hopefully, we don't have to dig into that, and if we don't, that goes right back into one of the CPC covering holes.
Before we leave this, John Willamson and I, and Steve Sorrow, our custodian, went up and went through the building. There are holes up in where the roof and the walls come together. It's not covered under this, so we're gonna have to do that out of our maintenance budget. I'll check with Barbara, or I'll ask Liz to check with Barbara in terms of how much money we have, because we've been putting things out there for maintenance. We also took a walk through the inside, just to make sure, because there's, there's lots of wires on the building that aren't used anymore for telephones. So we've got one telephone line that we're gonna keep, the rest of them we're gonna take down. On the building itself, right now, it says, it's on two lines. It says Plimpton at the top, below it says, Plimpton Historical Society. Now, we've got a sign out front that says Historical Society that Steve built. I'd like to change the sign on the building itself to the Old Town House. And either Old Town House or 1850 Old Town House, whatever you think is, because they'll know it's the Historical Society, we got that other sign there that looks really nice.
Well, that is how we're referring to the building from now on, is not that...
Right, and in fact, it is the Old Town.
The Old Town House.
So maybe we just call it the Old Town House. So we'll take the lettering down. You're gonna have to do that when they paint it anyways, and then we'll, when it goes back up, we'll have new lettering.
Yeah, it still would be neat to do something about the date, somehow, maybe with a placard or something to incorporate.
We do have a placard on, right by the doors you go in, but it's this kind of print...
Is it one of the metal round ones?
No, it, that's a good idea.
We should get one from Mass Historical.
We should.
That's a good idea.
We do the nice ones, the metal, and you bolt it right to, and it's kind of, not engraved, but almost like embossed.
Yeah.
Can you?
Yeah, I can find out about that.
Would you run it by John, too, just so?
Okay. I'll make sure.
All right, all right. But yeah, that's a good idea. So we'll make it Old Town House, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Volunteer recognition program.
You would come up with some neat ideas that, or that you had found, that other people did?
Yeah, and I think we need a session to go through them, but my thought, after looking at them all, I went over them again today, was that it would be nice to have a committee sort of appointed to task to go off and do some of these and make recommendations back to us. And I'm, I don't know, maybe three people, you know, so it's, so we might give some thought to that.
Mm-hmm.
But there was some work in some of those, I mean, it wasn't just some...
Yeah, there was some work, and some expense.
Yeah.
In some of those.
Yeah.
Well, and you want this to be meaningful to the volunteers, you don't want to come up with an idea that isn't really what, you know, they would want or appreciate.
Absolutely.
So it would be nice to find out with this committee, you know, what, you know, what they would like...
We've got so much on our plate now, that we wouldn't give it the right amount of...
The attention it deserves, right?
Yeah. And we've been talking about...
So we need a volunteer to volunteer.
Volunteer to head up the volunteer recognition program.
So maybe we could think about and come back with some names that we think might make sense.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be somebody who knows the town well, and is also very personable.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
Okay.
So should we put that back on the agenda for a couple of weeks now, so it stays reasonably hot?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect.
Yep. The next one, Liz, I think is probably, you know more than I do, the town-owned land disposition process?
Sure, just to update the board, we were having Rich Bowen assist the treasurer with coming up with an easy-to-follow procedure. She's aware of the procedure for disposition of town-owned land, but we wanted something tangible, that any office who was interested, or if the public was interested, just to kind of see how that might look, how the process should go. To that effect, we've been approached recently by a few different private people in town who have parcels maybe adjacent to theirs or abutting theirs that are, you know, essentially landlocked, and they're just sitting there, they're town-owned, and they're expressing interest in purchasing those. So obviously, we have to follow the legal process, and, you know, make it available to everybody, and do all that. I don't know, though, it seems like this has kind of been sitting for a bit without any real action.
At least a year.
So I don't know if it's, if it's okay with the board, I was thinking that maybe I could send a memo to the treasurer's office, and just request that, a full list of everything that's town-owned, and then maybe we can put together a separate list of those parcels, the ones that people have come forward and specifically expressed interest in, and just kind of get that rolling. Like, maybe we could, she could put some out to auction if it's not usable. And that's the other thing, too, that I think before we sell something, it'd probably be a good idea just to circulate some information about the parcel to, say, like, the Open Space Committee, or Conservation, or assessors, whomever, just to kind of give people a chance to say, "Oh yeah, we're not interested in that."
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I think that's a good idea.
Before we do anything too prematurely. Like, I don't want to rush through just to make land available to a couple people that expressed interest.
No, we can't do that.
But at the same time, it seems like it's been kind of stagnant for a while, and we're not really...
Right.
Yeah, it wouldn't it be nice to get some movement with this?
Yeah, because these people have been asking for quite a long time.
Yeah, there's some people in, I mean, you know, they're willing to participate in the process, they understand that it's not a sure thing that they would even get it, but they're just kind of like, the town, the land is of no use to the town, like, can't you look into selling it? Like, we'd be interested, so...
We agree. You go off and do that.
Okay. All right, that's good.
Hi, Jerry.
Hey, John, how are you?
Great.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, you're on the agenda for tenant school updates.
Okay.
So I thought we'd start off with the fun stuff, because that's always the best way to start off. I think the last time we were sitting in front of you, we were talking about how we didn't have a generator, and that was a huge problem, and there were huge bills associated with not having a generator, so that we could have a generator so we could hold school. And I think, as you all probably know, we went ahead with that, and then town meeting was good enough to actually reimburse us for it, since we had already started to spend the money. But that's all installed, that was all set as of May, and along with having the generator there to deal with the well and the fire suppression system, which is all the prior generator did, we actually now have, part of the school is now hooked up with that generator to provide for heat as well as lighting, particularly the administration area and the cafeteria, I believe. And then also, if the heat is on, that at least helps to circulate the hot water through the building. That doesn't mean the classrooms are gonna be warm, but they're not gonna be frozen pipes, at least.
Hopefully.
That's, that's the way that we are understanding it, but that's all in and done, and so that's, that's definitely positive. And then, a few weeks ago, the water treatment system went online.
That's great, too.
Yes, can you believe that? That's been five, six years, seven years in the making.
Very long time.
I started on school committee what over four years ago, and it was, we were...
In the middle of it at that point.
In the middle of it at that point. So, that is done. Big thank you to Selectmen for your support, to the community for their support. Just every ton we made on that ended up being exponentially more money, but it is done. It is quite a beautiful room, if you get a chance to see it up there next time you're up, have Peter show you. It is, they did a beautiful job with it. It is up and running. We paid the last bill for the contractor, who also Atlas Construction has to be thanked for their, they were good bidders, and excellent to work with, and on time, and got everything done before school started.
Absolutely.
And we just have a small payment left for the consultant in Green Seal, who also has worked very well with us through this last part of the process. So, those are all the really excellent parts. I did send you this afternoon to your town emails a report, which I think we had also let you and the FinCom know that we were doing in order to assess the roof. It's been, since we started the capital planning process, we've been always noting, as a side note to everything to FinCom, that, hey, you know, the flat roof of the school is not new. And it's, we know it has some issues, we're not sure how much, but it's out there, so keep that in the back of your mind, and it's not gonna be cheap. Well, the report proved that it's not gonna be cheap, it's not great shape, and that we have some issues. So, the short part of that is, is we're really talking about two, we have multiple roof systems on the school. We have, and we did the renovation in 2001, and so we have a metal peaked roof at the back of the school, we have a barrel vault metal roof over the gymnasium, and we have also a rubber roof over the cafeteria, and then we have a bunch of flat roof. And we actually have two sets of flat roof there, one that goes what it looks like from this report back to 1990, which in that report, as best I can tell, is the white roof that you see there. And then there was some additional black roofing put on, and some flat sections, one at the back of the school, and one right toward the front side by the gymnasium, which were done, I think, in 2001, 2002 timeframe, when the renovation was done on the school. It looks like we perhaps have some results of the low bidder going on here, because there's some rather not ideal work that was done, which has caused some issues. We have some leaking that's gone on, we have wet insulation in some sections, which you could see from the infrared, which is not ideal, and just, yeah, just a mess. It's just, we shared this with the rest of the school committee and talked about it this, just half an hour, 45 minutes ago, and at least one of the members, it was very clear to see from his face that he was shocked, sort of the condition. Then again, no one looks at the roof, right? I mean, you don't see the roof, it's up there. But this is great to have this, this is to help us with next steps in planning. We had some open items from our discussion at school committee. We're not entirely sure, from a grant perspective, as to whether the roof qualifies or not at this point, because you've got two different dates going on here, you've got 1990, you've got 2001, and typically, it has to be 20 years.
Correct.
But perhaps it's old enough, given that enough of it's old, so we've gotta look into that.
Right.
But I think...
The grant, excuse me?
Yeah.
The grant John's referring to is Massachusetts School Building Authority, fondly known as MSBA.
Right. And, so, we still have some, some work to do here, and the grant, just to give an idea, would probably be in the 40, maybe 45% range of the cost. As you saw from the report, they're already at 1.2 million. My guess is, is that's, that's the baseline, and we'll go up from there, at least that's how it typically goes. So we'll have to do sort of a number of things. One, figure out when we're eligible for a grant, if we're not eligible for four or five more years, then it doesn't matter from that standpoint about the big number, we would still have to do something to get us to that point and band-aid it until then, because clearly, at roughly half a million dollars off of this estimated estimate, you know, we can't turn down that and do the whole roof, nor does it make sense to just do the old roof and leave the newer old parts there. You probably wanted to go and do the whole thing together. If we could be eligible for that, then we'll have to sit down and figure out when that can make sense. That may not make sense this year, that we can, you know, come up with $700,000 if we're, if this estimate would stick, that we can even come up with that, even bonding it. I mean, so we have to, there's a lot of work that we'll have to all do together to figure out where this can fit, and, and so on, and it's, as I understand, not an easy process...
No.
...to go through that grant.
Correct. If it's, if it is of interest to you, if we were to assume we're eligible, if the town were to encourage me to apply, I have to apply for the grant, because it's school-based. Once the grant is received, you own the grant, and you get to do all the meetings and work with the OPMs, et cetera. I mean, I remain involved, but technically, it's your building, but for whatever reason, they ask the school superintendents to apply. So the grant is due, the application is, becomes available in January of 19. It's open for about a six-week period of time, till about mid-February. The timing of it is clearly designed by not a superintendent who is building five budgets during that period of time for all the districts, so they really put it in at the absolute worst time for all of us. However, that's when it's due. It's a very onerous project, it is astounding the amount of work and things that are required to meet their criteria. I will also be applying for one for Kingston Elementary School, we seem to be into roofs lately. We, I was able to get a grant for Halifax, their roof project was funded through the MSBA. So it is doable, it is well worth the time and the effort that it takes.
What percentage of the total amount for Halifax did you get?
I, I think it's, I apologize, I'm not 100% positive, either 52 or 56.
Okay, somewhere in that range.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. I assume it's based on the town's ability to pay. I believe Plimpton is considered a wealthier community, so I'm guessing, I know it's not, I'm just...
We had a good laugh about that at the school committee meeting, so feel free.
And Kingston is the same. Kingston, we're estimated somewhere in the mid-40s would be my guess for reimbursement rate. I would assume Plimpton would be somewhere in that area, possibly a little bit lower. I believe Plimpton's ability to pay, based on whatever criteria they're using, is a little bit higher.
I think you're right.
Yeah. So, what happens then is, we would find out in about May if the grant is approved. You then have to hold a town meeting to approve all the initial costs to begin the process. That has to happen over the summer, usually by the end of August. The dates are very, very lockstep. Then what happens is, it goes out to bid, and the actual project doesn't start till the following summer. So even if we begin January of 19, the work would not happen until the summer of '20. So it takes that long, but the actual process of the application is a very short window.
So the funding is really the next, next fiscal year.
Exactly.
The next, next fiscal, two fiscal years out.
Yes, exactly. But it's, it, you have to do with the initial funding, which is sort of to hire the OPM to begin the whole process, but it's...
In that fiscal year.
Yeah, in that fiscal year. So there is some money that would be due, and the town would have to make a commitment to it. But it's a, it is an onerous project. If you're interested, they actually have great information on the MSBA website, if you just Google "MSBA." They have all different kinds of PowerPoints and stuff that sort of give you some ideas of timeframes. The new, this fiscal year's information isn't up yet, but we'll be spending lots of quality time together if we get Elizabeth. time together if we get Elizabeth.
So, I think that, you know, the biggest point that we wanted you to take away from this is that we've got some work to do on it, and that this will be a very cooperative process between Board of Selectmen and FinCom and the school committee in order to figure out what we need to do and how we need to do it in order to get us to where it's going to need to be, which is a new roof. But whether that is, whether that is two and a half years from now, or whether that is six years from now, or five years from now, we'll have to figure out how that fits in. And of course, you know, we always have that, or at least what seems to always be the issue is that nothing gets cheaper, it only gets more expensive.
Exactly.
So.
Did we have this in the capital budget forecast?
It has been, it was not, it was not within a five-year window, so it was not specifically listed. However, I have footnoted it each of the last two times through, and we have spoken about it at FinCom meetings, saying, we don't know what, you know, we didn't have this. So, it's now in the five-year window. But it has been an item of discussion at each of the school committee FinCom meetings that we have had over the last couple of years.
You can patch in the interim until you-
Well, we'll have to, I mean, it sort of doesn't, we will have to. I mean, we will have, there is going to be some money allocated to this in the more immediate future, because we can't leave the wet insulation there. You know, we're going to have to deal with, you know, that, and we'll reach back out, I assume, to them to kind of get a, if it's determined, like for instance, that we cannot get the grant until it's twenty years, we can't, and I assume we can't apply for it until it's twenty years. So, if that's the case, then the next step in my mind would be to reach back out and say, okay, what's an interim plan that we can, to attack this, to get us five years down the road.
Is there any opportunity that there are other grants that would, can you get more than one grant, I guess is what I'm asking.
I'm not aware of any. The Mass School Building Authority is the only grant that I'm aware of. There's two different types of grants that they do. They do a grant that is for basically roofs, boilers, windows, doors. Halifax got the roof, windows, doors version. There's also a grant that you build a whole new school. There's very few of grants that build whole new schools anymore.
Sure.
But, and they're very competitive. The grants are very competitive, so, and again, they don't make it a grant that you just sit down and say, oh, I think I'll just try for this. I mean, it's not something that you would just do on a, you know, weekend night. It requires gathering a lot of information, so I honestly am not sure. We do need to do a little bit more research, as John mentioned. It's a little bit unclear to me, just because of the way the school was updated in 2001. But if the majority of the roof is 1990, I would tend to think we've got a good shot at it. The question is, would the Selectmen like us to apply this January if we're eligible? And I guess that's why John and I are here.
And that's, we have, and we'll set some time up with FinCom as well to give them an update on this, so that everybody is sort of thinking about this, and we'll have to put it in as part of that process about where we think that can slot in and how we could pay for it.
One of the things we're thinking we're doing is the budget process is going to be done through the town administrator, and then the town administrator will present to the FinCom.
Oh, okay. A different process.
Yeah. Save some time with, for them-
Okay.
-without doing all detail. Now, obviously, the school isn't part of that, you have your own process, but we'll have to sink in, so Elizabeth will be very involved in what you're doing.
Yeah, although this would obviously slot into the standard budget process, because it would be outside of the school budget.
Yeah.
Right.
So, do we have any sense of the need to move quickly, or a little less quickly on this? The consequences of waiting four years, let's say, or even waiting two years while we kind of get all these pieces put together?
So, I guess one of the things that I've learned with roofs is the longer you let them go, if they're leaking, the more damage they cause. So, at a minimum, we want to stop the current leakage from happening and getting any more insulation wet, any more damage done to the building. What I hadn't expected was that the insulation was very wet, and my understanding, and unfortunately I've learned more about this than I ever wanted to know, is that when you have wet insulation, it really impacts the heating and the cooling of the building, which could be part of why we're having, in my mind, extremely high electrical costs, because it's not allowing the normal ebb and flow of the air through the building. So, it's something that we don't want to let go too long, you know, obviously, when there's wet, there's that M-word that appears, and that's never a good thing, certainly in schools in terms of breathing. I think that was part of why the school was closed for a period of time, and I think everybody was moved into the gym for quite a few years. It was prior to me in 2006, that's when I started, but-
So, one follow-up, just following on on that question, it would be to ask, because we had one other question for them, I think, it would be to ask, if we decide to move ahead and we were to do the roof in the summer of 2020, I guess that's where it would put us, would we be okay leaving what's there? My guess is they're going to say no.
I would agree.
So, if that's the case, we actually have the cost to deal with the immediate issue, regardless of whether we move ahead or not. So, that would sort of take away one of those, well, if we wait a little bit, so what? The other risks I think you have is that the grants change or go away or contract, and you end up, you know, and the cost goes up at the same time.
Right.
I mean, the cost went up for this, we were lucky to get this bid when we did. The police station might not have had a successful bidder if the costs right now were in operation. So, you know, there's no absolute answer on that, but I think it comes down more to when we can pay and what we can pay.
So, if we applied in January, and then we hear in the six-week period, the first budget that would be affected is fiscal year twenty?
So, I would, if, again, the Selectmen and FinCom, everybody would like me to do that and we're eligible, I apply in Jan, it's due by mid-February. There's a six-week window, it opens beginning of January and it's due mid-February. From mid-February until May, we hear nothing. Somewhere about the middle of May, they'll say, yes, you got the grant, no, try again next year. If we receive the grant, and I apologize, I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe it's within ninety days of the acknowledgement of the grant, the town has to hold a town meeting, and you have to vote to come up with the money for the project manager and for some of the other things that are required as a beginning part of the grant. In Halifax, we held it on a very hot day, it was about a hundred degrees, it felt like it anyway, in the all-purpose room, and you have to have a town meeting, and I think the amount that was voted was, again, I apologize, 135 to 170, somewhere in that neck of the woods, was voted for the town. That was out of that fiscal year's amount. Then what happens is they come in, they give you the amounts of what they believe it's going to be. Once a project manager comes in, these are just documents to get us started, these aren't the real numbers. The real numbers come from-
We did this with the police station.
Yeah, the real numbers come when the project manager gets in and says, well, yeah, that's true, but he didn't plan for XYZ, or he didn't plan for the cost of taking out the wet insulation, whatever it may be, all those contingencies. I mean, there is some contingencies built in, but, you know, MSBA, it's prevailing wages, you know, they come up with all these contingencies, it's, you know, it's, again, very lockstep. The money doesn't have to come up until the following February was when we held the meeting in, so it's basically a year out, but you have to have that one block of time, about August, when you need that money to get it started.
Probably less than that, because the project in Halifax was a lot more money.
The project in Halifax was a lot more money, because what Halifax chose to do was they did the roof, they did the siding, they did the windows and doors, and it was just the roof, windows, and doors which were covered. The siding was not covered, and they also were doing a fire suppression system, because I discovered only about a third of the building had no fire suppression, which struck me as not a good choice with children in the building.
So, is our FinCom aware of any of this at this point?
Not yet. We figured we'd share with you first. So, I'm happy to reach out to FinCom and get on their agenda, and just to give them a heads up and sort of what's going on.
Again, this is real time, you know, we were able to, we asked to get this done by the end of the last school year, you know, just knowing that these issues were coming up and becoming more prevalent within the building. We've had some leakage, most all the buildings leak. I mean, I don't know why they always build school buildings with flat roofs, they leak, but that's what they do. So, you know, I've had leakage in all my buildings, so, yeah, okay, dentists leaking, oh, well. Yeah, but it became more prevalent and became more pronounced, and that's why we wanted to pursue this. Once we know if it's a possibility that we're eligible, then everything will move on a much quicker pace.
Eligible or not?
Right.
I mean, if we're just not eligible, then we need to, what do we, what do we need to do, and how big of a-
Band-aid.
How big of a, is that Band-Aid going to cost?
Exactly.
So that we, and then we're, we know where our schedule is.
Yes.
How do we go about finding out if we're not eligible, what that Band-Aid looks like? Do we then have to have a project manager anyway?
No, I think we would go back to the architects that we had do this, since they're already familiar with it, and say, what is it that you would recommend sort of minimally viable here to do? And you just, it would probably be a much smaller amount, and we would just handle it as a normal.
Well, it seems like we need to know regardless whether or not we're eligible.
Right.
We need to know that, and we probably need to know that other item as well. I mean, we need to know how much it would cost to get us through if the architects think that it's not something we could wait on if we're eligible.
So, do you need a vote from us to go forward, to apply for the grant?
I will eventually. If you wanted to, not necessarily to be a formal vote, if you just wanted to give us a blessing to continue on the process we're on, you know, just so I, you know, I don't mind doing research, but if you have no interest in me applying, if you let me know, it certainly saves a little bit of time.
I guess my only concern is, it seems like we're going to have to apply sooner or later, and I guess in my mind, it's a question of whether it's this coming January, which just feels to me like there's not so much time.
Compressed, sure. I don't disagree.
In the big scheme of things, looking at the capital plan, and I feel like we're going to be rushed on that, but the question is whether this January or succeeding January.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think we have to move, I think there's another step here, and we don't have all the information, so we have to get to that step.
Absolutely.
And then at that point, get all of the people in the know to make a decision, it's either it's too rushed and we need to, even if we're eligible, need to wait another year just because we can't get our heads around it or whatever. This is, this is a, you know, it's a big expense, and we need to be able to make the right decision on it regardless.
I kind of feel like FinCom and us meeting together, because it kind of brings up the bigger picture on where we think we're going.
That might be helpful. And I was going to say, before you spend a lot of time working on the grant, or prepping to work on the grant, if we had that follow-up information as to whether or not we're eligible, obviously, and then perhaps a cost to Band-Aid the problem for a little bit, I think it would just, it might be helpful.
So, why don't I do this? Why don't I reach out to FinCom, see if I can get a meeting with them in the more immediate future, depending on how often they're meeting, and after that, and talk to FinCom about this, we can find a time that makes sense, you know, whether that's in October, early November, where we can get back together, all of us together, and have that discussion. And we'll certainly update you with information as we get it, so that we're all sort of moving along here, and then we'll-
That makes sense.
It does make sense.
Make a decision or throw a dart at a dartboard, whatever we have to do at that point.
They have the capital, what do we call the capital committee? So, the FinCom is the capital committee.
Right. I was going to say, you call them FinCom.
Yeah.
Yeah, in Plimpton, we call them FinCom.
Depending on which half.
We had talked about the possibility of doing some bonding to address some of our road issues. It might make sense to combine this and deal with the roof and some road issues at the same time in one bond.
Right. So, that's part of the reason we really wanted to get in front of you, is to just have this on the radar screen, so we can be creative and we can be thinking about it. And, you know, we'll do what we need to do.
Right, absolutely.
We need to Band-Aid it for five years, we'll Band-Aid it, but it has to be just part of that planning and process.
Right, right, because then we're just throwing money away if we're not, if we don't have some type of plan.
Especially with everything we put into the school and all that, we want to keep the-
Yeah, absolutely. We've made such great strides.
It looks, it looks as good as the day it opened, and Peter does a great job of that, so we want to, want to make sure that we keep the major systems.
Awesome. That sounds great. So, a little more work to do before we figure out what the game plan is?
Yep.
Okay.
So, I think we have two more items, one which is, one which I'll leave to you at the end, but one more specific dentite item, which is actually a happier one, I think. We had talked about playground, so some, Jason Fraser and Mr. Veneto have spent a fair amount of time this summer putting together a plan for that. We had the pleasure of hearing about that tonight. It's going to be, we're likely going to put together a CPA application, and came up with, I think, what we think is a pretty good solution. There's a fair amount of work done so far. Mark's sitting there going, okay, and the number is.
Can you share my hard copy?
So, what we're hoping to do, and we can, I'll get, I'll just, we'll send it along. I can show you a couple.
I'll share my hard copy.
Here. Do you have the color?
Yep.
Okay. What we're hoping to do is, we've talked about it with respect to-
Thank you.
We talked about it with respect to finishing-
Yeah, we saw this.
-finishing off the, finishing off the water treatment system, we used some school choice funds for that, in order, remember, we split some of the leftover money that we had in Voke, as well as using school choice money to be able to finish off and get that project completed. What we're hoping to do here is to use a combination of school choice funds and CPA funds in order to pay for this project. At this point, the estimates are, with a 20% contingency included, at about $250,000. Looking to put, I'm going to put the numbers out, but looking to, the thought is, too many numbers. Again, I just heard about this about an hour ago, so.
Here, we've got all the numbers in there.
Yeah. About a hundred, was it 130 from CPA? And then the rest would come from school choice funds, and nothing from the budget or raising appropriate. We have to do a little more refinement on that, as far as, I think we have a little bit to think about, about how we get people to the playground, but hopefully that's going to be a small amount. What we're trying to accomplish with the playground is to bring this into current compliance with regulations and so on and so forth. Some of the stuff that we have out there right now belongs in a museum. We have nothing out there right now that complies with any of the guidelines for fall zones and the amount of material that you need and all of that. We have one area that actually does have some piece stone, but not anywhere close to the nine inches that is recommended and so on. So, what we're trying to do is to get that upgraded in a thoughtful fashion, and also to really front-run any potential issues we may have down the road with a student who has disabilities to provide equal access. And so, certainly a little more work needs to be done, but they have, they've done a lot of work, and certainly plenty to be able to put together an application to CPA, which we will do for this fall, and then we'll just see where that takes us.
Thinking back forty years ago when my kids were there, it's a wonder some of them survived.
Falls? Was a dinosaur there when your son, kids were there?
You had some things out there, like the, remember the wheel that-
Oh, the wheels, oh, yeah.
Oh, God, it's a wonder somebody didn't get killed on it.
I know.
And the metal slides, like the one we had over in the playground over here where the basketball court is. It's like, my kids are looking, how's that slide that high? It's like, that's all right, it doesn't actually work right.
It's so narrow.
You know, you slide halfway and stuck, you know? So, we'll be, we'll be going ahead with that, as far as I understand from the meeting tonight, and getting more information and seeing how we can do that.
So, this is way ahead of where, way, thinking way ahead, but this conceptual drawing, where would this be on the school grounds?
It would be where the playground is now.
Right, so it would replace-
We have, we have to do a little more work as well to make sure that we don't put it on top of the leaching field, for instance.
Took my line.
Because we're not moving it. They said, well, if we have issues, I said, you mean when we have issues? Because if you put something nice and new there, you will have issues. So, we have to do some of that due diligence and make sure that placement would be appropriate, and then the existing, the existing playground, and that's to the left side of the dentite, which is the main playground there, that would all go and be replaced. And with that picture, there would be a second set of swings as well, is what's part of the existing budget.
Very nice.
Because they have, they have two sets of swings now, and which I think were fourteen swings, and they would end up with twelve in the new one, so.
That was a request of the students with that two banks of swings. Swings are important in my view.
Sure.
So, that's that piece of it.
Okay.
And then.
So, I thought while I was coming on this lovely evening date with John, I might bring up something from Silver Lake. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that in Silver Lake, one of the things that we've been talking about for quite a while is having a school resource officer. I, I think that it's sort of been in the background for a while. The town of Kingston, for four years, funded a half-time, they called it a school liaison, because it wasn't a full-time position. So for four years, it came just out of the Kingston Police Department budget. This current year, Kingston was kind enough to fully fund, out of the Kingston Police budget, a full-time school resource officer. It's fully funded from the town of Kingston. The school committee is very interested in having two full-time school resource officers on our campus. So we currently have now a full-time school resource officer for both the high school and the middle school. The school committee would very much like us to have two full-time officers. The town of Kingston is committed to maintaining the full-time school resource officer that they are fully funding. It is somewhat interesting and new to us, if we were to try to get a second school resource officer, it would be outside of our Silver Lake budget. It would be something that the three towns would need to have agreement on in terms of funding. Because it has to be a Kingston police officer, because it's within the jurisdiction of Kingston. So you can't volunteer to have a police officer from Plimpton go up two days a week, or Halifax three days a week to meet the need, that was my initial idea, won't work that way. Because it's within the jurisdiction of Kingston, it has to be a Kingston police officer. So if the towns are willing to support this, it would need to be outside of our school budget, and it would be an agreement within the towns in terms of how to fund it. If Plimpton and Halifax were to be willing to share another resource officer, assuming Kingston maintains the full-time one, Kingston's about 52, 53% of the district, so that leaves a pretty equal amount for Halifax and Plimpton. Plimpton is about a quarter left, so Halifax would be three-fourths, Kingston, I mean, excuse me, Plimpton would be a fourth of the cost. So I asked the chief of police what the cost would be. It depends really on how we look at it, and also if Halifax is willing to work with us to provide this. And, and again, if it, if it turns out to be a full-time person. The number 80,000 for the full cost seems to be in the ballpark. However, there's some, again, this is sort of new to us, because a school resource officer is not full year, that's one issue. Also insurance, so there's things that are new to us, but I think if we just sort of worked with the concept of 80, it would at least give us a starting point, which would be about 20,000 for Plimpton. It is something that I would like to put on as a warrant article, separate from our budget, to bring forward to the towns. I will be approaching Halifax also, I have begun a discussion with Halifax at this point, but I have a little more information than a first meeting that was talking about it. But, again, the idea would be to have two full-time officers for Kings, on our Silver Lake campus. In these days, unfortunately, they tend to be kept pretty busy.
Would, would the Kingston chief be willing to give a presentation to, you know, our representatives, the selectmen?
I think that's a great idea, John.
Yeah.
I really do, and I think I would love to try to do it with Halifax also.
Yeah, have everybody in the room.
You know, we introduced our school resource officer at the last Silver Lake meeting, if you wanna watch it. He's a great young man, we recognize Kingston, you know, they've been kind enough to fully fund it. You know, and again, obviously, if a Halifax or Plimpton child, it isn't that they don't help those children. You know, but Kingston has really stepped up to the plate, it is within their jurisdiction. But, you know, I, I would love to see a second officer on board. Unfortunately, students aren't always making good choices. Vaping has really become a huge issue that we have been really dealing a lot with. So we've really upped the ante on trying to get our students to stop in terms of the repercussions.
You could host it at your school.
I, I think that would be a great idea, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to make that happen. You know, again, it's something that, you know, my, my personal goal has always been to be proactive instead of reactive. You know, I, I feel very blessed to have a great relationship with all the chiefs of police. You know, they're, they're, we have a great relationship, we meet monthly, and I, you know, text them whenever needed, and they're very responsive. So it makes me very happy. But, you know, again, I, I've really worked very hard to have a good relationship, but I, you know, I wanna do all I can to keep our, our campus safe.
Sign of the times.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is, unfortunately.
So I just, I did wanna mention that to you, we'll get some more information, I think a presentation's a great idea. And I will, I will try to arrange some dates that we can, we can host that for you.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Anything else for us? Or have we done enough?
Oh, that was our question. Great.
Just think we spent some money.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
But we will.
The good news is, is we have two projects completely done.
Yeah.
And so that was, that was.
That have been hanging around.
That have been hanging around, and the town has been very supportive, and luckily, last year, we were able to, you know, fund quite a bit out of our budget, out of areas that weren't needed. So, you know, I, I think by working together and, and your support, we were able to get some really important things done, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we may be using that building if we have, as a.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that we talked about that when we were talking about what to do with the generator, and it certainly, it certainly makes a lot of sense, given, you know, the generator out here is not exactly the newest thing in the world. But also you have, you know, it's a bigger facility, and, and, and it's probably better for the school, too, because it also creates a higher level of responsiveness if we have another tree that comes down across the driveway. Because if it's the emergency shelter, then they have to get there and get it out.
Yeah, right.
So I think that's great, and to find out, beginning of last March, that we actually didn't have heat in the building, was.
Very lucky we didn't freeze.
Huge shock.
Oh my gosh.
Because, you know, if we, if that, if that storm wasn't warm.
No.
We would've been in real trouble.
That would, I mean.
Yeah.
Forget about leaking from the roof.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we wouldn't have had a choice, we would've just had to deal with it.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your efforts, and, yeah, so we'll, we'll be getting together relatively soon then.
Absolutely, we'll definitely be in touch.
Great, thank you.
The old townhouse restoration we went over, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you need any of these back?
I survived my first justice of the peace.
Your what?
My first justice of the peace.
You did a wedding?
Christine, remember how many times I talked to you about that?
I wanna hear about that, that's.
Yeah, oh, it was, it was great fun, it was really great fun.
Oh, I might have to apply to add that to your resume.
Yeah, right at the top.
Maybe eventually it'll just, exactly, exactly.
It was really fun, it will now, so, yeah, you never know.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you.
It's actually the most fun in town government, is being a justice of the peace. I mean, I'm in my second seven-year term, and it's all about joy and sort of blessing these events.
That's great.
Subject.
Okay, the goals, do, we've kinda hit on a number of these, unless.
Yeah, we have, we hit.
Volunteerism, grants.
Public safety, is there anything on the building?
Yeah, I, the week after we met, the public safety committee met again to talk about the other driveway. They voted unanimously to recommend moving forward with that, and think there's room in the budget for it, that's not sure yet, so. It's not a not-done deal, but they gave their approval to move forward, so.
Subject to the money being available, right?
Yep.
Wow, that's great news.
So that is really.
It's gonna be quite a, a banking, isn't there, isn't it? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Financial management, we need to be thinking about getting something about the new budget process, so.
I'm waiting for Nate to sign that letter.
Okay.
And then I thought that could go out right away, kind of tell people that the processes will look a little bit different.
Yep. Economic development, I don't have any updates, unless you all.
No, I've got nothing.
Maybe when we go out to talk to Cisco, we can tou- touch on that with them, what their plans are.
Sure.
I'm sure it'll come up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. Technology, I found out that downstairs, the zoning, the new enforcement officer has a laptop, I guess. But he can't connect to the network, for whatever reason, and it turns out.
It's his personal one, yeah, Michael got him a new computer, though.
Well, I think this one, Kathy has one, I thought she had one that was fairly good, she's running XP.
They, no, she got one of the new ones, and then they took the XP one and gave it to Alan, but then that wasn't gonna work, so Michael brought Alan a new one.
So she's using XP again?
She shouldn't be, she got a brand-new one.
Would you check on that?
I'll check, 'cause she got one of the seven, I think it was.
I mean, of all the people down there, she's the one who should be on the latest.
She was all set up with her new one, or at least as of, I don't know, two months ago, when that was done.
Okay, I got a different story, so just.
Let me find out.
Yeah, great. Okay, town administrator, updates?
Well, I think we touched on most everything. The deadline for the responses for the exhaust system at the fire station, we had some issues with the specs, so we had to push the date out longer, so, no word on that yet. We also got the responses in for the bandstand renovations, to do the masonry work and everything. So John Willamson and I will go through those, similar process, and we'll figure out where we're at with those.
You give us a little sheet of how, what the numbers are?
Yeah, I thought I sent one out on Thursday, but let me make sure.
Okay.
I'll double-check that, and I can send it again. But everything came back for that, for the most part, where it was expected to, there was one outlier, I think, that came in really high.
Yes, in fact, yeah, I did see that, 98,000.
Yeah, something like that.
Everybody else was in 18.
Outside the realm of possibilities for.
Now that you mention it.
And then we have some correspondence, the first thing, we're looking for signature on this form, it's for use of town property. This is for a yard sale for the Greg Thompson Memorial Scholarship Fund, to be held on the town green on October 13th, from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and it appears that all the other entities have signed off.
Who's, uh, who's doing that?
Marilyn Thompson or is it Sue Duggan?
It's Greg Thompson Memorial Scholarship Fund.
And Marilyn Thompson, town resident, is.
Okay, have we done that in the past? I guess we've.
No.
No?
And it's been signed, or you've said that, signed off on police, fire, highway? So I, I make a motion, we approve this application.
Okay, I'll second.
We're not aware of anything else, 10, 10-13, it's suddenly, we don't wanna be approving the use of town land.
I don't think so.
Town green for, alright, so I make a motion to approve this.
Alright, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we also have, it appears that Tara did not have an appointment slip on file for Jeff Marani, showing that he was captain, so if you could just take a vote to reaffirm that appointment and endorse this, just to bring her records up to date.
So I make a motion that we approve this appointment of Jeff Mariani to fire department captain through June 30th, 2019.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, whoops, sorry, Mark. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one update, I think I sent a note out this afternoon about the speed signs.
Yes.
And so Vicki Alberti called me over the weekend. Apparently this, now 45, it was 40 miles per hour, it's now 45. And I remember having a conversation with Jim Mulcahy, he had ordered new signs. And if you go around town, there's signs with yellow and arrows and things, I mean, it's. So what, what isn't clear to me is why we're doing this. I think it was a mandate, but I don't know who it's from. And I thought I remember Jim saying, if you do, like, if you go and post the street at 30 miles per hour, then it has to be 30 miles everywhere. And he said, you can't do that, because 58 and 106 obviously have to be higher speeds. I thought I saw a Warren article, when I was looking at Halifax's special meeting, that they had put in an article to make it one speed limit, but then they could post, so they might make it 50 miles an hour, and then they could post 30 mile-an-hour signs, 20 miles. So I sent you a note, Liz, just saying if you could talk to Charlie Seelig, 'cause I think he must have researched it.
I can look at that, a lot of places do that, I think Randolph has something similar that they passed, and they have a few different state routes, and I think that they say it's 30, with the exception of state routes in which speed limit will be as posted, or something like that.
So that's gonna be, I think, an area of discussion that's gonna be a little emotional. We also have the Main Street Ring Road issue still to deal with, which, with the schools, so this is part of it, too. Because if it comes down 45 miles an hour, you get to the corner, I think it drops down to either 20, 25 miles per hour around the corner, according to the sign. So we need to know how to handle the whole thing.
Find out more, too, because this sounds vaguely familiar to me, I wanna say that Scott Ripley came in.
Yep.
And I don't know if the signs appeared, if DOT put something up, he was gonna be looking into something as well.
Yeah, we need some background on how this all happened, and where we can go.
Certainly 45, where it is now, I drove down it tonight, where it's posted is 45, and people adding 10 miles an hour, that's nuts.
It's scary, yeah, yeah.
Even at 45, it's too fast.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement.
Yeah, I agree, I'd love to see us lower it, and then as posted, you know, where the other, that it's 30 everywhere, unless it's posted different.
A lot of places are doing that now, and it seems to be working for them.
Yeah.
Okay, good, so more to come on that one, huh?
Okay.
What's that?
I read the term fundamental speed limit.
Fundamental speed limit?
Sort of foundational, yeah, yeah.
Any other business? Thank you? Nope?
No, good.
So, dates to remember, interviews for fire chief this Wednesday? That's 5:30, right?
Yes.
And 6:15.
Is that, is that open?
Yeah, but then we'll do an executive session afterwards.
Yep. And we've got a meeting on the cell tower with the lawyer at 4:30, right, that same day?
Yeah, that's just you and I.
Just you, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, open meeting next is October 1st, when we skip one week because of, no?
We don't skip, it's next week is October 1st.
Right, but then we go to the 15th?
Yeah, we have Columbus Day.
Columbus Day, that's okay. So we're back on the every-week schedule, except for holidays interfere?
Yeah, we left out the 22nd, 'cause we thought we were already meeting three times in October, and then with the understanding that we could add it on if.
Okay.
If it was needed.
Okay, so right now, we're scheduled for October 1st, October 15th, and October 29th. Old Colony Planning Council Town Center Master Plan Workshop, October 15th, that's a Monday?
Yes.
And that's at 4:30?
That's at 4:30, and I, I'm gonna work with Tara on the meeting posting, to make it so that if you guys show up, that it's no problem that it's posted as a meeting, but then we won't start the other business until 6:30, when that clears out.
Great. And then we're closed October 8th for Columbus Day. Good. We don't have any minutes, right, we're, we're up to date, I think, as.
I haven't seen any.
Well, we should also add the open session for town meeting, which was, what date, 10, 2, 9/21?
9/21.
9/20.
9/20.
Yeah, you're right. Minutes, okay.
Were you gonna, were you gonna write that?
I gave you debris, yeah, I gave her a copy of what I put together.
Okay, selectmen rant and raves.
Do you have another one, or are you pretty much done?
No, I, I ranted about a special town meeting, it almost made all the rest of this worthwhile, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, I do have one other, sorry.
Sorry, go right ahead.